All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five City of Gardner Planning Commission meeting to order. Can you all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Begin with a roll call, beginning on my right.
Commissioner Von der Schmidt present.
Commissioner Combs present.
Commissioner Soza here.
Commissioner Juneau present.
Commissioner Mayer present.
Commissioner Berg present.
And we have a quorum. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the planning commission for study. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted on by one motion with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired, an item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of the planning commission or applicant. We have the standing approval of the minutes for the meeting on January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Is there any member of the planning commission that would like the items removed? A member of the public? Here none, I will entertain the motion on this.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Combs and a second by Commissioner Von der Schmidt. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Okay. Moving on to the regular agenda, we have the Evergy Emerald Substation and Gardner Substation number four. Rezoning from RUR County Rural Residential to AP Planned Agricultural Preliminary Development Plan, Final Development Plan, and two conditional use permits for utility major and utility minor. This is a public hearing item. And I'd like also to announce that due to my previous involvement with both the city's project and my current employment with Evergy, I will be recusing myself from this item, so I'm going to turn it over to the vice chair.
Commissioner Soza, if you'd like, we can, I just want to point out that there will be four separate motions that you will all be making. One for the rezoning preliminary development plan, one for the final development plan, and then one for each of the conditional use permits. So as we wrap this up, don't forget that there will be four separate motions for you all to consider after the public hearing. If you'd like, we have both applicants, the city partner, Electric and Evergy, here to make a presentation. And we are going to have the applicant speak first with the city presentation, or the staff report be second.
Okay. So I would like to invite the Gardner Electric team to come into a presentation.
Good evening, Vice Chairman Commissioners. So I'd like to give some background on how this project came about. In twenty nineteen, early, early twenty nineteen, the city began annexation along one hundred ninety-ninth Street. Later, they annexed several properties along Claire Road. So we had a need to look for a new substation to provide power to this potential developments. So the goal was to provide safe, reliable electricity to residential, commercial, industrial development southeast of the city by adding a one hundred sixty-one K B substation with a two hundred sixty-one KB feats from the grid. In twenty twenty-two, the city retained Olson for a site location, land acquisition, and preliminary design for the substation. The project was executed in two phases, site location and then the preliminary design. Phase one, the site location, was completed in July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty. Based on the substation's siting report, the city purchased ten point acres of land for the new substation. Then the city authorized Olson to proceed with phase two, the preliminary design. That was completed September nineteenth, nineteen, twenty twenty-three. So you will see in the slide, the, the location for the new substation, the used to, the name was Substation Four, which is along Claire Road. And that was the original site layout, which was only Gardner. Then in November eleventh, twenty twenty-three, the city awarded Olson the final design, equipment construction, specification, bid review, and recommendations in project management. During the initial conversation with Evergy for the interconnection point, Evergy expressed an interest in building their own substation next to us. On July, on June third, twenty twenty-four, the city signed a memorandum of agreement with Evergy to construct an interconnection facility for Substation Four and the sale of two hundred fourteen square feet to Evergy for a future substation. So that's the reason Evergy is here today. Construction of both facilities will begin fall of twenty twenty-five. So that's the background on the substation construction. Any questions? Oh, sorry. So this is the revised site layout. You will see the Gardner Substation, and also on the right-hand side, you got the Evergy Substation. Now, any questions?
I, I have a question, Vice Chair, real quick. Can we go back to that last slide? This was just a different, not a different, hadn't seen this depiction yet, so curious just to take a look at that. And then point of clarification point, you'd indicated that part of the need for this additional substation, I believe, I think, I think you said specific maybe to Gardner, Evergy, I don't, I don't know. But I picked up on, you said there was land acquisition done on one hundred ninety-ninth, and then also some done on Claire Road, so it's looking to serve that portion of town that I think you said.
Yeah, I forgot to put a name map, but it's supposed to be Claire Road and one hundred ninety-ninth. It's almost like a triangle. So the purpose of the substation is to feed the future developments on that area.
The future development of there. Okay, great. Thank you. Those are the questions I have now.
No, no questions.
Thank you.
All right, now I invite Evergy. Come forward, please.
Good evening Commissioners, Jessica Keck with Evergy, eight eighteen South Kansas Avenue, Topeka, Kansas. And Gons did a great job of explaining the project. I'll explain kind of the, the Evergy side of it as well, and kind of hopefully bring the two together. I don't know how to. Do I do it? There you go. So like Gons had mentioned, we're working with the City of Gardner to, to build a proposed Emerald Substation on the east side of Claire Road, south one hundred seventy-fifth Street. It's going to tie into our existing transmission infrastructure near the proposed site, and will help the City of Gardner supply electricity, electricity to its customers. So we have to have separate connections into the Gardner Substation. So we have to have our lines, and then they have to connect to Gardner. This proposed substation will be located immediately east of Gardner's proposed substation. This just shows the entire site that was already shown, and then our, the blue box is where our, our site would be. We're working with the city to facilitate rezoning. We'll be accessing it from an entrance off of Claire Road. We'll improve that entrance off of there, and I'll have some images of that as well. There will be a one hundred fifty-foot internal communications tower in the substation site. I'll show you a, a location of that in another slide as well. It's, it's a monopole. I have an example of what it looks like, and it's for communications in between our, our transmission lines and our substations. It's for internal communications. So this just kind of shows the site, and the, the blue dot is where the communications tower is. The, the green is Gardner Substation, the access road coming in in yellow, and then our, our site in, in blue. You know, we, we typically, we choose sites and we go out and we select them based on, you know, several characteristics of the property. This one meets them all, but it was already one that the City of Gardner had, so yes, we consider all those factors, the size of the property, the location, if it's buildable, if it's in a floodplain. It met all those, but it also was the city's as current property, so. Area around it's primary agricultural, residential landscaping operation to the northeast, and then the nearest residence is point one mile from the substation fence line, and that's the residence north of the site. Evergy did hold a neighborhood meeting on March twelfth. We sent letters out to everybody within a thousand feet of the substation property to present and participate in the meeting. Evergy and the City of Gardner were there and available to explain the project and to answer any questions they had and solicit feedback from the community. Predominant questions and issues raised included the security of the substation. They wanted to make sure that during construction, that the site would be secure, and then obviously after construction as well, to ensure the children in the neighborhoods are safe. And the entire site's fenced, and it'll be fenced while we're working in there to, to keep the site safe, and we'll keep it secure. The aesthetics of the substation, including preserving the tree buffer along Claire Road, and then planting around the substation itself. In a later slide, I'll show you the landscaping plan that we have for our site, and we will maintain the buffer off of Claire Road. And then several residents, current and future residents from the neighborhood northwest of the substation, attended the meeting to express, express frustration that the developer of the neighborhood had not disclosed a potential use for the substation on the city-owned property and where the substation will be constructed. And then another, and one of the participants had mentioned that they thought that maybe there's an eagle nest around there. And we went out last week actually with a Evergy biologist and then a consulting biologist, and I'm, myself and a couple of my team went out to, to verify, and no evidence of bald eagles in that site, so we cleared that one too thankfully. Just some photos of the area currently. There's the, on the bottom picture, there's the pretty big tree stand from, from Claire Road, and then the backside is predominantly some cedar trees in the backside, and there's an existing transmission line that runs along the north, off of our property, but it runs along the north. Site plan showing the, the two locations, Evergy Substation on, on the east side, and then the Gardner one on the west, and then the access coming in from Claire Road. It'll be a gravel access with a concrete apron at the, at the beginning of it. This is the landscape buffer, and it also shows the detention basin that is on the far west side. And there'll be landscaping along the north side, we have to do smaller brushes and native plants because of the transmission line. We have to worry about clearances on, on that. And then on, on the south side, or I'm sorry, on the east side as well. And on the south, we have a berm to help raise the level of the ground up, to help buffer that, to help the screening on that as well, and then we'll plant larger trees along the south property line. We can there, there's not transmission line infrastructure going on through there, so we can plant bigger and taller trees through that area. This is a, an example of the communications tower that's going to actually be inside the substation fence. It looks pretty much like a large transmission pole. It's, it's not the, the lattice tower structures that you, that you think of either. It's, it's just a monopole that's inside it, and you'll have lightning messes in the substation that'll look similar to this too. And then we went through the golden factors. Further, the, the property's still Johnson County zoning since the annexation, so we're going through the, the rezoning application. Compliance with the proposed development of the city code. We're committed to working with the city. I think we've had several meetings already, and we're going to continue those meetings. Same thing with the, the additional site-specific conditions are necessary to meet the purposes and intent of this code. We're working with the city to ensure that we meet the, meet the, we're in compliance with that code. Impact on the public realm, including the design and functions of the street, scapes and relationships of building and site elements to the street scape. Nearby property owners should not be significantly impacted by noise during construction occurring from the substation. Construction, there's more traffic, and there'll be some noise during that. That'll be done during daylight hours. And then the substation itself with the tree buffer around it, and then our, the newer transformers are significantly quieter, quieter than, than the older transformers. So once it's constructed, there will be no noise around the community from that, especially with the trees and the farther away from you get. Adequacy of drainage utilities and other public facilities besides electricity. We don't require utilities. And then drainage on-site, we saw from the basin, will be adequate. Compatibility of the character of the area in terms of building scale, form, and landscape. It's going to improve the reliability of Evergy's electrical grid and the City of Gardner and, and Johnson County. Will be able to restore power more quickly after outages, which will improve public health and welfare. Compatibility of the area in terms of operating characteristics, hours of operation, visible, audible impacts, traffic patterns. Like I'd mentioned just a little bit ago, there'll be some chip rate impacts during construction of the substation itself. We'll work at the city if, to get any permits we need, especially if we have to do a road closure to bring a transformer or something like that. And then after it's, it's construction, it's going to be unmanned except for routine maintenance. And then the application will not prevent development and use of the neighboring property in accordance with the applicable developmental regulations. Surrounding land is currently predominantly agricultural use. Based on similar projects, we have not found that builders and developers who know about the plans of a future substation in advance, they still build on the lots adjacent to it. Then long-range plans applicable to the site. I had mentioned it's currently predominantly agricultural. Based on similar projects, we found that builders and developers who know the plans, basically the same thing, they, they still build on lots around it. And then recommendations, we have, we have engaged with the city to ensure this project satisfy, satisfies all the city requirements. Sorry, it's long-winded. I like to go through those factors, though. It kind of shows that I've done some of our homework. But if you have any questions, I usually have a slide that says questions, but I don't. But if you have any questions.
So I'm going to ask the commissioners here if you would start. My right, do you have any questions to that?
I do have several. Would, would you mind bringing the gold factors back?
Yes.
So you mentioned there were several residents that, that came, and this may be an unfair question, or maybe you find that you can't answer. Was the resident that is directly north of the property at this meeting?
Yes.
Is, was there any reason, and I just noticed this, obviously in the layout, is there any reason that the berms are not on the north side, the property only on the south?
Because of the transmission line on the north side, we have to keep clearances, so we keep stuff as low as possible on that north side.
And so one of the questions I had, this is more or less to staff, the public hearing is required. That's not here tonight, clearly. That will be at a separate session.
That will be this evening.
After, follow. So obviously, this is intended for the future residents and, and the growth. And I can see that the long-range plans identify that there's no impact. Explain a little bit about, you know, how we know that, and I'm specifically asking because, sure, we want more construction, more growth. Would any of that be limited? You know, by putting the substation there, again, I, I see that you clearly say that builders or developers still build. But just in general, can you talk briefly about how you go about defining future developments and how you know it might not be impacted?
Do you mean people building up closer to our substation sites?
Of course, anywhere in the surrounding areas.
Okay. That's, that's fine. Having a substation, number one, is going to help with the reliability, which is what, you know, the standard we, it definitely helps with the reliability. It helps us to provide power for future growth. But we've also had substations in pretty much every location you can think of, and people build around them all the time. We, we have people build right up next to our fence. So knowing that one's going to be there very rarely, and, and in our opinion, obviously, has slowed down any growth around the area.
Well, I have no other questions. Thank you.
Yeah, a quick question. The, the landscape plan you had pulled up before, I think it was a few back, just showing, yeah, that, that was a great, a great picture just to show the depiction of kind of that, that boundary of all landscape outside of the property line of Evergy to be designed by others. That helps me to, to break out what the forested area, I don't know, looks, did look like. I, I drove out there the other day, and it looked pretty bare, like, so I wasn't for sure if, if, if the trees were truly still there. And that, that's really a question for staff that, we'll, we'll come around to and have time.
I'll pop this one back up, sorry. Perfect, yeah. But that's, I mean, obviously, the tree, when, when they leaf out again, it's going to look a lot different. I, I understand what you're saying too, because when I drove by, that all the leaves were off of, the ones at the front, at the back, they're all cedars, so they're going to keep their leaves, but they're cedar trees. Right, they're cedar. So the ones at the front will not, these will stay. Okay. Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you.
I just have a question about security. I noticed in the plans, there's to be a mesh wire fence around for security.
Yes.
Another power station that I was involved with, not in Gardner, has a, almost a louvered fence around it to prevent sight through, so you can't see the transformers, idea being nobody can shoot at them. Is that a plan? Is that for, is this a smaller-scale substation that doesn't need that?
So we do have different tiers of, of, of security. We haven't looked into the louvers quite frankly yet around our transformers. We did used to have a normal two-inch chain link fence around our sites. We've gone to this tighter mesh because it does hinder people shooting through it and stuff like that. So that's currently for these sites like this, that is our security measure, is the tightly woven mesh with the barbed wire on top of it.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. So I understand there's a stream in that property, right?
Correct.
So is there any, are you guys going to, is it going to remain natural, or what's the impact of this project in that stream?
Yeah. The stream is, if you can see, it's on the west end. Where are the, I don't know if, I don't know if there's a pointer on this, but it's on the west end in this picture, and there's a stream buffer that we're maintaining. We're not touching the trees in that area. Correct.
Perfect. And I'm just curious, is this project, it's going to improve the, I don't know, what the term you guys use for the recovery time? Let's, there was an outage.
Right.
How long does it usually take for power to come back? Is this going to improve, is it going to, how soon?
So with improved infrastructure, you're going to have improved outage times. Depending on what the outage is, it kind of depends on how long it's going to take. So when you have new equipment, outages you would presumably are going to be less and, and less frequent. And that's why upgrading the infrastructure in these situations helps with the outages, just because it's, it is newer. But an actual timeframe, it's hard to say. Anything else?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. I understand Seth has the presentation. Jessie, you're up.
Good evening Commissioners. I'll try and make this quick, not go over, well, this will be some duplicate information. Gardner Electric is requesting the rezoning and associated preliminary development plan and final development plan on behalf of itself and Evergy, while both Gardner Electric and Evergy are requesting two separate conditional use permits for each of their own substations. The property is located near the Gardner development and is mainly wooded. There are overhead, overhead transmission lines located along the north property line. As you can see, it is currently zoned county rural residential and is also surrounded by county rural residential. Prairie Trace Estates to the northwest is zoned RP one, planned single-family residential. The comprehensive plan future land use map has the property labeled as high-density residential. The proposed planned district would allow for two substations to be constructed. Evergy Emerald Substation is proposed to be on five point two-four acres on the eastern portion and would be owned and operated by Evergy. It is considered by our code as a public utility facility major, which includes utility services of a regional nature such as primary substations to provide the general public with electricity. Substation number four would be located on the western five point seven-five acres and would be owned and operated by Gardner Electric. It is considered a public utility facility minor, which includes utility services of a local nature, such as substations to provide the local area with electricity. And both of these are required to obtain a conditional use permit under the Ag zoning. The front corner, quarter of the property is proposed to remain in its natural state. Within this portion of the property, there is a stream, and the plans show a sixty-foot-wide stream corridor buffer along both sides of it. The existing vegetative growth will help screen the two substations from Claire Road. Evergy is also proposing a one hundred and fifty-foot-tall monopole tower for the substation communications only, shown in that red circle on the screen. A twenty-five, twenty-foot-wide landscape buffer surrounds the site on the north, east, and south. There are two deviation requests. The code standard of the first is that. The code standard of the first is that barbed wire is not permitted on perimeter fencing, but the applicant has proposed it along the perimeter of both substations. The fencing will be set back 20 feet from the north lot line and the Evergy portion of the south property line. It'll be set back further for the Gardner portion due to the access drive. On the eastern property line, it will be set back approximately 110 feet. Based on the substation operational safety and the large setbacks, staff is supportive of this deviation. The second deviation request is for a gravel access drive. The code standard is that driveways shall be paved. The applicant has submitted a gravel management plan to maintain it in good condition. Based on the low traffic volumes, once the substations are in operation and the landscaping buffer depth, staff is supportive of this deviation. Staff finds that within the land development code, public utility facilities major and minor require a conditional use permit in the ag zoning. We find that the barbed wire and gravel drive do not meet the code and require deviations to be granted, and that the project is consistent with various policies in the comprehensive plan to support future growth. As Deputy Director Maggie mentioned, there are four motions on these items. The first is for the rezoning from county RUR to AP planned agriculture. The planning commission makes a recommendation to the governing body for these two items, where they will be, the governing body will be the final decision makers. Staff recommends approval with three conditions. Condition two requires the property to be platted before construction occurs. The second motion is for just the final development plan, which the planning commission has decision-making authority for. Staff recommends approval with two conditions. The first is so the preliminary and final development plans can both be heard at this meeting without waiting on the governing body approval of the rezoning. The third motion needed is to approve the Evergy Emerald Substation conditional use permit. Based on the long-lasting need of utility operations, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit without an expiration date. And finally, the fourth motion needed is for approval of the Gardner Electric conditional use permit. Staff also recommends approval without an expiration date for the same reasons. And we are available for any questions.
I do have questions for staff. So the first question I have for staff, if you could pull back that view showing the drive coming in and the access. Yeah, that one. Thank you. So if I'm reading this right, all access comes into the City of Gardner substation. How does, where's the access point, or are we just, are you just showing me that because this is solely Gardner substation portion?
So the access drive, you can see there are two gates going to the city's portion.
Correct.
There is another gate, it's kind of hard to see, at the very end of the access drive, and then that would go into the Evergy portion.
Okay, okay, I see. So at the end of the access road is the gate to access Evergy. Okay, excellent. Thank you for that clarification. Then the next question regarding the process of the rezoning. So it's, it's the rezoning for the entire parcel with, then at some point, Evergy is purchasing a portion of the parcel. Why are we doing it in what seems to be a cart before the horse fashion?
So the whole property will be rezoned as one, is what's proposed. Evergy has requested that they get approvals before purchasing the property itself, and then that's when plating would occur. It would occur separately after this, which is why there's that condition that it has to be platted.
So Commissioner Mater, I'm gonna butt in just a little bit. So this is not unusual when we have private development situations where we have a developer that's interested in a property. They come forward with a development proposal, but their contract with the property owner would not necessarily, the sale would not be executed until after zoning is acquired. And that's a pretty typical scenario with private development. Most applications on the private side, you just don't hear much about it because the developer or their representative, their engineer or architect come up and represent the project. But a lot of times, that land sale does not occur until after the fact. So that's, that's pretty typical practice, because the people who are purchasing the property want to know that they have the approvals before they pay for it.
Right, want to know that, that the commissions that are, you know, overseeing the interests of the citizen body as a whole are seeing and recognizing and having that extra set of eyes of caution over proposals.
Right. And then if, for whatever reason, if something like that were denied, it gives that developer the out to go look for a different parcel or to go to a different location.
Okay, thank you. That, that's all I've got for staff right now. Thank you.
No questions.
Commissioner Burr?
All right, since we don't have any questions, I'm gonna, yeah, now open the public hearing. If anyone would like to comment on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the public hearing. All right, since we don't have anybody, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, so I got a motion to close public hearing made by Commissioner Mater and second by Commissioner Wondishman. Oh, in favor, say a.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries.
Five zero.
Right. Um.
Just a question.
Okay, so we can have the discussion. Any questions?
I don't think it's necessarily a question, just a comment, that I, I struggle with this rezone, and I struggle with approving it. It just, it feels just not, not quite right. And after reading the material and doing my due diligence and driving around the site several times, I know it's, it's the end goal for Gardner, but when is the end goal really relative? So I just, I'm having a hard time with just a full-on approval of the rezone. That's my conversation.
Commissioner Burr?
No. I understand what you're saying, but I agree with the point that if this is known ahead of time, developers have less, and homeowners have less issues with buying. Electricity supply is something that we desperately need, and it's only going to grow. I know that there's, in the city council meeting, they had plans to buy property or energy from different places, but I don't think that this is ever going to go down. So to me, this is a way to get ahead of that, to get this done, than wait for a point where we have to do something right away because we don't have the energy for the city. So I, I understand what you're saying, but I think this is a necessary process to go through and, and substation to build.
Okay.
Okay, that's my role.
I actually appreciate the points, and if it's, can we, can we talk more about it?
Absolutely. We've got all the time to discuss.
Because I would, I would actually like maybe a bit more detail, which you've always been wonderful in articulating in these types of scenarios. What, what is the uncomfortable part?
You know, that's a, that's a really good question. It's, are we putting the citizens at a risk of not having enough electrical capacity at this very moment by not giving approval to Evergy to begin their building? We've already accounted for and planned for the Gardner substation on this land. It's proven there by the, our comp plan, which is what guides us as commissioners. So it's there. It's not that it's unseen, unknown, or unexpected. I think the way that Evergy is adding into the mix is my question and concern, because I'm not really getting a feeling that Evergy is fully benefiting the citizens of Gardner, because I'm hearing transmission lines are running north. So to me, that's, the bulk of energy is serving north. And I'm not an engineer or transmission expert by any means. It's just, City of Gardner's already said, hey, yeah, we know we're building a substation number four here. And I'm just, I get that. That's needed. It's there, definitely. We want to rezonate with that. But what, what are we opening the door to with the Evergy portion? I'm just not fully on board with.
I understand.
I hope that helps my clarity, because I'm, I don't always speak the clearest. I talk too much. Sorry.
Great, that's why I asked, so thank you.
Anybody else?
So this may or may not mean anything, or it may be to staff versus this other discussion. Are there other non-Evergy alternatives that, that we feel should have, should have been part of this? And were they already part within a bid process?
So what I'm going to suggest here is maybe we have the Evergy team and maybe even Gons with Gardner talk about the relationship of the two subdivisions and also our subdivisions. Sorry about that, substations, thinking about residential development. The two substations, as well as the transmission lines that are existing there today, how that serves not just Gardner, but that immediate area around there as well. So it may be good for both applicants to kind of speak to that relationship. And what I'm hearing from you, Commissioner Mater, is trying to understand how these two substations may work together, how they're taking advantage of that transmission line, and why this, this location works for both elements. So I don't know who wants to go first.
That would be super helpful. That's where I'm having a hard time bringing it together. Thank you.
So on the city portion, we're actually tapping into Evergy's transmission line. So that requires an interconnection point. That interconnection point has to be done by Evergy. So we don't have any other option but go with Evergy on that aspect. So we cannot go and request different providers, because that line is Evergy, so we have to stay with Evergy for the interconnection.
So that, because that's the, the choice, the option there, so it's like a.
Correct. And that's very similar to the Moonlight substation on Moonlight. So we have the lines from Evergy going through their substation, then into Gardner Moonlight substation.
That helps.
That's.
That, thank you, Gons. That was what I needed to help put the picture together, at least for me.
So nothing from us?
I don't think so. That, that helps me understand the Gardner perspective tie-in, and that's really what I was looking for.
So Evergy is the only option?
Yes, sir.
If I can clarify one thing with Evergy, the line that runs on the north edge is also going to be the line that feeds the two substations.
Correct.
I have a question, and maybe this is more of a Gardner-first kind of question. But are there other substations that we, Gardner, get power from that may not be in our area? And this is, actually, let me ask that a different way. So as I understand, it's going to serve the north. Is that only Gardner residence?
So you're talking about the Gardner substation or the?
Correct, I'm so sorry, yes. What we're, what we're talking about here today and uniquely the Gardner substation.
So the Gardner's gonna serve any developments southeast of I-35, south of Grotter or Prairie Trace. There's a lot of property that was annexed over the past couple of years. So we'll be serving those properties.
Got it. And the Evergy portion will serve something else?
Correct.
But the lines that tie into the Gardner substation, though, will take our transmission into Gardner substation, which will in turn feed the Gardner residence that Gons was talking about.
Commissioner Combs, both, both utilities have service areas associated with them that they have to cover overall. This geographic location really allows Evergy and Gardner to basically accomplish two strategic things, right? Serve for the future growth in the City of Gardner, that is southeast of I-35, as Gons was talking about. But that power comes through Evergy. Also, Evergy will have customers, I'm sure that will be fed power in and around that area as well, because our service area is really what is within the city limits of Gardner, okay? So as annexations occur, as things happen, that service area becomes somewhat dynamic. And the two utilities work together to adjust or petition for service area as annexations occur. So the interconnection of the two facilities themselves become pretty critical to supporting growth, because that growth could go further east than what is currently proposed at Claire Road. It could go further south. There's a number of different things that could happen there. But the intent is to serve all customers in that area with both of these substations.
And I may have missed this earlier, but obviously, there's going to be a purchase of the land. Is there timing involved that I might have missed or overlooked somewhere?
There is a agreement being reviewed by Evergy. They have a standard purchasing agreement, so they send that to us. We reviewed the agreement. We also, the C E O turned to provide comments, and right now is under Evergy's review.
Sorry, I don't, I don't understand.
So in order to.
Is there timing that is just undefined at this point?
So we're suppo. Yes, sir. We're supposed to start construction fall 2025. So the purchase will occur before then.
Before then.
I was probably saying during the summary, not earlier.
So we'll purchase the property after the C, after the CUP is obtained, and we have all the approvals, and then we'll do the purchase of the property, break ground, fall of this year.
Thank you.
Questions? Comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other discussion, you're ready for some motions.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I have to, I have to go on record. So as the planning commission, we are making decisions, I'll, I'll say that really drive the golden rule. I'm very, very familiar with that, you know, the aesthetics of the land, the unity. But things like purchase agreements or, you know, potential revenue streams, or whatever they may be, are, have been in the past. We've been asked to not use that in our decision-making process, but only focus on the aesthetics of, or within the guidelines that we as the planning commission are, are defined. Why is this different? Not, not once was there a no or a response that says, that's not something you should focus on. You should focusing on, or you should be focusing on the guidelines of what you approve as the commission, not service agreements, not the details of those service agreements. And we just got this in this instance. But two months ago, when we were talking about other topics, that was not the case.
So we're walking a very fine line.
I'm confused.
Yeah, so we're walking a very fine line, because this is a public project at the end of the day. So there's that transparency element to it also. As people view this meeting and as they look at it as feeding into the city council and that. So that's kind of why I didn't stop you at that point. So that's kind of why I didn't stop you at that point. I kind of sat back and said, if they're willing to answer that question, we'll allow it to go through. And again, mainly because this is a very public project and so there's a transparency element to that. There were discussions, there, there are other discussions that have been had at the governing body level already regarding power provision and different things that people can go look that up and, and see those discussions. So even as you were asking questions or the, the commission was asking questions about other provision or where, where power could come from, there's actually a mixture of various purchase agreements that are involved with how do we get our power? Not everything that we get, and I think Gons can confirm this, but not all energy that comes into the city of Gardner comes from Evergy per se. There are other providers that we have agreements with as well. So that's kind of why we kind of, I stopped, I didn't stop you guys because I do believe there's a transparency element because this is a, a public project. And there's a willingness by the utilities director to convey that information out to the public as well. I, I know it's differing, but it's, it's, it's a different standard now. The, the discernment piece really is, is that even though that information has been provided, that is not necessarily a guiding element to your recommendations and your decision-making, okay? You are to look at this more from the land use perspective, the development perspective, um, those kinds of pieces there as, as we're outlining the golden rules or in our criteria and code.
I, I appreciate that, David, and certainly I, I have the utmost respect for, for staff. But I, I feel like everything we do is, is for the public and should certainly live in the eye of transparency. So I'll, I'll leave it there, thank you very much.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Maggie, do you want to give a little more guidance on the, let's, so it's organized, what the first recommendation is and what that's about, and then, um, they can formulate their motion from that. I do want to point out for you all, something different in your packets this time around. On the first few pages, we've added some information about some of the motions, you know, so like if you're getting ready to make a motion, it's more generic framework, but you can simply just put in the staff recommendation or as you see fit there. Um, but it makes the motions a little bit more organized than what we were doing before, so Maggie.
Each, each one has to be made individually?
Yeah, and that's why I think Maggie can outline what the first element of this is and then we can go through all four of them that way.
So the first one relates to the rezoning from the county's rural residential to our planned agricultural. And part of being a planned zoning district, we have the associated preliminary development plan. So your first motion would relate to those two items and staff is recommending three conditions of approval as outlined on the screen. We request that that be part of your motion. You obviously have a variety of options. You can recommend approval as we, as staff has recommended. You could modify that recommendation including the conditions. You could recommend denial or you could recommend tabling this item to a future date and time.
Before we do that, I just want to thank the staff for adding all this new, uh, you know, information to the package. Uh, when I received my package last week, it was kind of nice to go through and, and see all the criterias and, and all the information that is on the package, uh, today. So I appreciate the staff for doing that. So, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve-
I can make that motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll make the motion that, uh, the planning commission recommends approval of the rezoning and associated preliminary development plan as proposed for the 10.83 acres from rural R U R County Rural Residential District to A P Planned Agricultural District with the associated preliminary development plan, subject to the three following conditions as presented in the staff report.
Second.
All right, motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor say nay.
Motion passes five zero.
Made by Mader and Bur.
The second recommendation that we have for you relates to the final development plan and that includes two conditions. One obviously relates to the recommendation that you just have granted relative to the rezoning and preliminary development plan. And then the other one relates to the property being platted prior to any construction-related permits.
I'll make that motion. Staff recommends approval of the final development plan provided the following conditions are met. As listed items one and two in the staff report.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor say nay. Motion passes five zero, made by Combs and Bur.
The next recommendation that we have from staff relates to the conditional use permit for the Evergy substation. And that is the public utility facility major for the 5.2 acres located on the eastern portion of the property. And we do not have any conditions relate, that relate to that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion, Bill. Are you going to-
I'm going to. Uh, staff recommends approval of a conditional use permit for a public utility facility, major electric substation for the eastern 5.24 acres located at 17955 Claire Road with no expiration date. I'll second that motion.
Vice Chair, before we make a, take a vote on that motion, can I just, in, I guess, within the motion or within what Commissioner Combs just laid out, um, he didn't call out specifically and this will be for staff and, or, or legal team. Um, there are some specific following plantings called out, like a tree per 30 linear feet, an evergreen per fifth, there's certain bullets called out. And it says with the exception of the deviations as requested above within the staff report. Are, are those deviations or is that part of the conditional use permit?
It, it was part, we've pointed out that requirement-
Mm-hmm.
Because there were specific buffer requirements for the major versus minor utility facility. And so we wanted you to be aware of the requirements. They are not requesting a deviation, so it was more for your information.
Okay, okay, thank you. I, I was just, just getting a little confused by some of the, the verbiage in the staff report, so. Okay, I, I don't have any other questions or motion, thank you.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor say nay. All right, the motion carries five zero, made by Combs and Volusis. It would be the last one right now, right, Gardner?
Yes, the last one is for the Gardner conditional use permit. This is a public utility facility minor and this is for the western portion, again, with no expiration.
I'll make that motion. Staff recommends approval of a conditional use permit for a public utility facility, minor electric substation for the western 5.75 acres located at 17955 Claire Road with no expiration date.
Second that.
All in favor say aye.
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 All in favor say nay. All right, the motion carries five oh.
And Mr. Chair, before we, before we move forward with this, I just, mainly for the applicants present, so the rezoning and associated preliminary development plan as well as the conditional use permits, they'll go before the governing body on April 24th, Monday, April 24th, I believe? No, sorry about that. Give me a second here. It's the third Monday.
April 21st.
April 21st, thank you very much. So they'll go before the governing body on April 21st at 7:00 PM in these chambers. The final development plan will, depending on what the governing body does, will either be approved by you already or will just fail at that point if it's denied by the, by the governing body. It will get Austin back in.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the, uh, second item. Uh, this is Fairfield Phase One preliminary plat, final development plan, final plat, uh, item number 25 dash 304 dash 01. Uh, do we have a staff presentation or applicant?
I'm not sure where Bob ducked out. He said he was going to go get you, but obviously he ducked out.
Well, he did and then he left.
Yeah, here he comes now. Still ready for your staff report?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Sorry about that.
Good evening and, uh, welcome back, Austin. This is, uh, item two, Fairfield Phase One, Final Development Plan and Final Plat. And I should have also had, uh, a preliminary plat on here as well. Uh, this, uh, phase of property includes 13.6 acres of land located on the south side of 183rd Street, approximately 2,000 feet west of Gardner Road. Uh, this property was part of an annexation back in 2002, uh, per ordinance 2010. It was a zone that same year from Ag to R1 Single Family Residential. Uh, and again, while this, uh, property went through a preliminary plat process last time you guys, uh, saw this, uh, it never have followed through with the, with the final plat and therefore the original preliminary plat had expired. So that's why they're up before you again today for the preliminary. Uh, the rezoning was approved by the governing body back on May 1st of 2023 through the passage of ordinance 2764, along with the associated preliminary development plan and preliminary plat. The original, again, the original preliminary plat passed back in '23, but since expired. Uh, these applications before you today are for the first phase of the, of this development. Uh, this is a, uh, basically a picture of the preliminary plat. The preliminary plat consists of 19 lots and two tracks situated on 13.6 acres. A condition of approval from the original approved 2023 plan and plat stated that no further development can occur without the extension of secondary access to either Gardner Road or 188th Street. And we are going to go ahead and recommend that this be continued as a condition if these applications are approved tonight. The final development plan consists of 19 housing units, uh, consisting of 18 single-family lots, one multifamily lot, sorry, I should have said 19 lots, uh, consisting of 18 single-family lots and one multifamily lot and two tracks on 13.6 acres. Uh, the town home, which is on Lot 20, will consist of 69 units. There is only one point of access into the subdivision off 183rd Street. Uh, additional access, uh, access points will be constructed in future phases. Because this development is part of a larger planned development, most of the infrastructure was designed and constructed in the past, all, excuse me, all utilities are located either within or adjacent to the site. This side kind of shows the elevations that the developers are planning on utilizing on the single-family detached side, which is basically on the, the eastbound side of Poplar. Uh, the town homes are, are following another plan that, uh, they have constructed elsewhere in Johnson County. Uh, those will be accessed off of Poplar on the west side of the road and access off of a, like, private drive, private shared drives. Staff findings that, uh, this, uh, development promotes infill residential development within and complete subdivision, provides a range of housing options and provides a transition from the adjacent industrial development to the west and the single-family to the east. They're looking at, uh, basically four different deviations. Uh, three of the deviations are based on the frontage designed for neighborhood yard, uh, the hardset, hardscape allocation and the sidewalk, uh, connection as well as the, uh, access width limits. Uh, the last, uh, the fourth deviation is going to be, uh, the garage limits, uh, where 25% of the facade is front-loaded, uh, up to 45% have setback from the front billing line. So the, uh, first, uh, deviations for basically a two-car garage driveway, the amount of hardscape, uh, according to them will be held to a minimum. Uh, we basically said this is, our request is very similar to other deviations that have been requested for this type of frontage design. Uh, we've actually requested that they provide additional landscaping within the front as a, uh, above and beyond, uh, if they ask for deviation, we're always looking for something in return. We're asking for enhanced, uh, landscape. Uh, same thing with the four-foot sidewalk. Uh, usually these types of, uh, neighborhood yards require a sidewalk leading down to the, to the street sidewalk from the front entranceway. Uh, we have allowed for an access to the, to the house's driveway off the front entrance feature and that deviation has been granted quite a bit here in the city. The third one with the neighborhood yard was the access width limits. Uh, any, a lot of the developers will tell you that they cannot sell a house with a single car drive. Uh, the, the market just won't accept it. That's why you see a lot of two-car dri, uh, driveways and garages. Uh, the unfortunate thing is as the lots get smaller, uh, you get a lot more concrete in the front. Again, uh, we're wanting some enhanced landscaping to kind of, uh, kind of sh, add an enhancement to that front yard instead of having a sea of concrete. Again, the last one with the garage limits, uh, we've had another development here in town that has asked for that in the past and, uh, what we'd like to see is some design embellishments on the house frontage, uh, not limited to window garages or enhanced landscaping like we've required for the first three, uh, or other fronts, uh, facade design elements added to these, these structures. And we'll work with the developer when they bring in their plot plans so we can address all these deviation. Staff findings on the preliminary plat, the plat is compliance with Land Development Code. All utilities are available to the site and only minor changes have been made since the preliminary plat was approved back in 19, in 2023. Uh, staff findings on the final development plan, plan is in substantial compliance with the approved preliminary development plan. Uh, the final plat is in substantial compliance with the preliminary plat as shown today. The final plat is in substantial compliance with the preliminary plat as shown today. All utilities, again, are available to the site, and the final plat for Fairfield Phase One is proposed to be constructed in a single phase and allow for the orderly expansion of development to the south. And the, I believe the developer is here, so I'll be available for any questions as will he.
Thank you, Bob. Developers present, you'd like to have a presentation or comments? We say your name and address.
Doug Bohi, on behalf of the development team, Mr. Chair, and the rest of the commission. I don't really have a presentation. I just have an appreciation of the process. We've been here several times, a few, well, a year and three or four months ago, and have gone through several communications with staff. And as far as I know, we have met and agreed to all of their recommendations for this project. And our desire is to build a project that enhances the community, that creates the availability of workforce or affordable housing for our community of Gardner. And so we're here to ask for your support and look forward to developing this tract of ground soon. Thank you. And I'll take any questions that you might have.
Thank you. We can start with Commissioner discussion. We'll start on my right. Mr. Van Horsen.
No, none, none related. I know it's been several months, but condolences to your late brother. He was, had a lot of great impact to people to great many. So, other than that, no, no other questions.
I just, clarification, staff, is it eighteen lots or nineteen? Because it shows, sometimes it shows nineteen, sometimes it shows eighteen. I know that shows that the number of single lot have been reduced. So the final number is eighteen?
On the single family.
It's eighteen, single family, it's N one.
Lot that would be the town home development.
Oh.
So a total of nineteen lots, two different types, if you will.
I have another question. As far as deviations, you know, I've been in the commission for, yeah, because now we always see, are we, I don't know if we can compare ourselves to other cities, how lenient we are towards deviations? Because I see that, you know, we, we see that we try to accommodate developers and that. I was just wondering how, is it called practice to?
So, so what we do in general, there's, there's two functions here, and one of these, we already know the staff is gonna be coming to the planning commission probably in coming months. I don't know exactly when. But what's really been driving deviations and deviation requests here in Gardner at this point in time are the smaller lot sizes that many of the developers are going to, which is the fifty-foot wide, sixty to fifty-foot wide, or fifty to sixty-foot wide lot sizes. We have a series of design requirements and things that go along with those sized lots. And what we're finding through the pattern of requests is that there's three or four that come up almost every time.
Right.
Okay? And so there are ways to mitigate, I think, what the code was asking for or looking for in design guidelines. So I'm anticipating that we're gonna probably be doing some code changes to kind of adjust so we're not granting as many deviations. But what this has allowed us to do over the last, gosh, probably the last two years, Commissioner Mader, I think, is when we started really seeing these smaller fifty-foot lots, is in the last two years. And what it has allowed us to do is start opening up conversations with developers about changes that can be made to their elevations and what we could do also in some of our code requirements to create the situation where primarily it's about the two-car garage on the front elevation. And so we have been figuring it out. We've had about three or four different developers. And I've had at least two or three other development inquiries from regional and national-type developers asking about those guidelines. And in talking with their teams, we have found that there are some things that we can address that still get the quality that we want in those front elevations and in those front yards. So that's why we've been a little bit more lenient with these deviations at this point. But it does also have to do with things like enhancing the front entryway, enhancing maybe a porch, adding landscaping to mitigate kind of that concrete element. And, and what we're finding is we're getting good responses on some of the front, front entryways in particular, where we, instead of putting those entryways way in the back of a house, not in the back, but in the back of the elevation, with the garage sticking way out like we have on a couple developments now, we're getting some better designs where the front entry is being pulled closer and the garage is being taken back. And so that's, that makes a huge difference in this. And so as we're getting those kinds of elevation adjustments, we just have not had time to change the code yet, so we've been more accommodating of the deviation requests as long as they've been working with us on those kinds of elements. That's a, that's, that's a long-winded explanation, but it's connected to several different activities, so.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
And I'll let Bob speak to one of the house designs, so.
And, sorry, and in particular, we were appreciative. Actually, they had one of their designs, one of their houses that they're proposing on constructing, they actually redesigned it and brought the front entranceway a little closer to the front building line of the house, which has been a little bit of a challenge in the past, but because a lot of times these smaller lots, single-family, they have a cookie cutter plan that they bring into town. It's kind of a pleasant surprise to actually have a developer saying, you know, we'll redesign it and bring it a little forward. So they actually did it on this one.
Thank you, thank you for the background.
Just a couple of clarifications. I, I will have to second, I've seen that reverse design and it looks really cool. I'm happy to see that being explored, changes the look. So just, just tell me, where did the piece of land go that we've reduced? We reduced lot, a lot by one from nineteen to eighteen. Where'd it go?
There was another lot on the very south end of Poplar that kind of wrapped around the corner, but we, we picked a line back when we got our approval that took the unit count, which took the travel, the, the trip count down to a, a comfortable number for you all. And so to, to get there, it was removing front doors.
Removing the density.
Yes.
Okay, okay. So I understand the plats expired, but remains generally the same. In looking at the, the lots, what are tract RW one, RW two, RW three, and RW four?
Jesse, can you put the plat up?
I mean, it's like, they're pretty good-sized chunks. One's three acres, one's like.
I'd say it's the cul-de-sac right away.
Could that be it? I, and, and I'm just being super literal when I'm looking up.
RW would stand for right-of-way.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, that helps?
Yep. So Commissioner Mader, just to help explain that for everybody, at one time, way back when this was in front of us, right, as the preliminary development plan, there were roads that were coming through and that, and those are getting cul-de-sac. So they're terminating and will not attach to Poplar, okay?
Got it.
So that was part of the discussions with the neighbors and everything that went on.
Yeah, I wasn't on at that time, but I do recall coming back on right after it had been seen. And I remember the discussion, and this is such a better layout, and I, I, I fully, I think this is great. So just, I just wanted to clarify that. And my last question. It refers to the, the fire truck turning map, sheet number four. So I can see the fire truck can make all the turns within the cul-de-sacs. When it comes down Poplar, is, am I looking at it that it cannot make that cul-de-sac turn, so it just backs right out? It's like an in-and-out motion?
No, at the, at the south end of Poplar, next to the drainage retention area, there will be a temporary turnaround with fire trucks.
Got it. Okay. Those answered my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have, I have one more question for you, too. Poplar Street.
For me or for staff?
I think it's, I'm not sure.
Okay. I'll stay right here.
Okay. The paper says that developments should be accessed one hundred eighty-third of Poplar. Poplar she will extend southward through the subject property, but it steps this out. And you just said there's gonna be a temporary turnaround at the end of Poplar.
At the, yes, a temporary turnaround for fire trucks.
Okay.
Past the, it's actually past the residential development.
So then is the future plan to extend Poplar further south?
Eventually, yes, to extend it south. And then, I don't know the name of the street or what the number is, but I think probably one to the east to tie into Gardner Road.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
So we're, we're, we're kind of hamstrung, unless we want to bite the bullet and pay for the entire street through somebody else's property, which we may. If, if we find that, that this program is really clicking and meeting the needs, which we feel it will, maybe we'll just want to go ahead and get the city to endorse that with us paying for it. But at this time, we're not prepared to do that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Also, Commissioner Berg, one of the conditions of approval is that this development will not extend any further unless there is a connection to either Gardner Road or one hundred eighty-eighth Street. We basically have said, this is the furthest extent of the development that you guys can obtain, with just one access point into it. So again, that's one of the conditions of approval.
So then would Poplar be the intended connection down to one hundred eighty-eight?
Pop.
Sorry.
Poplar, Poplar would either extend down, Poplar is considered a collector. Poplar will either extend all the way down to one hundred eighty-eighth Street, or maybe a branch off of Poplar will extend over to the east to connect up with Gardner Road.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'd say a quick question for staff. Are we gonna have two motions on this? One for the preliminary plat, and then we have to do another one for the final development and the final plat? I see nodding heads. I don't have any more questions. I had the same question as Commissioner Mader about where did the, where that extra lot go, but that, that makes sense. Thank you for that explanation on that. And then, yeah, excited to hear we'll have some updates to the code so we can hopefully see fewer of these deviation requests, you know, just, yeah, just get it updated, so.
I'm glad you brought up the deviation request, because there really should be a third condition of approval on the preliminary plat, actually on the final development plan, basically accepting the deviations as requested.
Okay, so it'd be items one through six, and then adding on a seventh one of deviations recommended in the staff report?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. So we'll do that on the second motion. I guess if there's no further discussion on the preliminary plat, I will entertain a motion on that. I'll make that motion.
Prelim, preliminary plat, staff recommends approve to approve, excuse me, the preliminary plat with the following conditions. I'm just gonna read them.
You can say items one and two.
Uh.
Can you read them all out?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we're gonna, all right, I'm gonna start it. We approve the preliminary plat with the following conditions as listed in items one and two in the staff report.
Second.
The motion by Commissioner Combs and a second by Commissioner Sosa. All is in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Moving on to the final development plan and final plat, this was the one where we need to add the item about the deviations.
I can make that motion. The Planning Commission approves the final development plan and final plat as proposed and recommends the governing body accept the dedication of right-of-way and easements shown on the final plat. Provided the following conditions are met, items one through six as presented in the staff report, along with an additional item number seven, the deviations that are recommended in the staff report.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mader with a second by Commissioner Berg. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Moving on, item number three, Prairie Trace Estates, fourth plat, or fourth phase, final plat and final development plan. Presentation.
Not yet. Good evening. The applicant is requesting approval of the final development plan and final plat for the fourth phase of Prairie Trace Estates. It is part of the three hundred and fifty-six lot Prairie Trace Development, which is located south of one hundred and seventy-fifth Street and east of I thirty-five. The property was annexed into the city in two thousand and nineteen, and the rezoning for Prairie Trace Estates was adopted by the governing body at its April twentieth, two thousand and twenty meeting. It was slightly revised in December of two thousand and twenty-three. The items before you tonight are for a forty-three lot subdivision with three tracts on thirteen point seven acres. The portion of the estates for approval tonight is shown in red. This is from the final, final development plan. The building type for the estates is for seventy-foot-wide lot residential suburban lots. Infrastructure will be extended from the surrounding phases. Gardner services the electric and sanitary sewer, while Water One provides the water. The final plat is in substantial compliance with the preliminary plat. Tract L, which runs along the north portion of the plat, will contain a portion of a walking trail that will continue through the development towards Prairie Trace Meadows Fifth Plat, towards the west, while tract K to the south will also contain a walking trail. Tract M, in the center of the cul-de-sac, will be owned and maintained by the Homeowners Association. The building elevations shown are to be representative of the houses that will be built in the phase. The development was granted several deviations as part of the preliminary approval to allow for houses with two-car garages. And there are two additional deviation requests for this phase that pertain to landscaping. The first is for there to be no frontage trees. This deviation was not requested with the revised preliminary development plan because staff had questions about the overall landscaping amount each lot has. Granting this deviation will keep the phase consistent with the earlier phases, and staff recommends approval of this deviation. The second deviation is for no shrubs in the open areas. There will still be the usual shrub requirements for the houses themselves. The open areas on this project are preserved natural areas and will have grasses instead of shrubs. Granting this deviation will also keep this phase consistent with the earlier phases of Prairie Trace Estates, and staff recommends approval of this requested deviation as well. Staff finds the final development plan and plat are generally in compliance with the revised preliminary development plan and plat. The project is consistent with the various policies in the comprehensive plan, and it is within one mile of New Century Airport, and so requires county review and approval. Staff recommends approval of the final development plan and recommends the governing body accept the dedication of the right-of-way and easements as shown on the final plat. and recommends the governing body accept the dedication of the right-of-way and easements as shown on the final plat with two conditions. Thank you.
Is the applicant present and if so, do you have a presentation or any comments you'd like to make?
Evening Commissioners. Uh, Nick Augustine with Schlegel and Associates, the civil engineer on this project. 14920 West 107th Street in Lenexa, Kansas. Um, no presentation. Uh, I'd just like to say it's nice working in Gardner and we appreciate doing the work down here and I'll take any questions that you guys might have.
Um, we'll start on my, my left this time.
Right now I don't have any, any questions.
No questions here, Commissioner.
No questions. Thank you.
No, no question. No question.
All right, I'll ask a question then. So just, just, just make, just make clear that with the deviation about the trees, there's still going to be trees on between like the sidewalk and the street. This deviation is for requirements for planting trees in the front yard then, in front of a house then? Is that, my understanding, that correct?
Uh, Dan Foster with Schlegel, also the landscape architect. Yes, that's correct. There will still be street trees requi- as required. This is for the yard trees, um, and then also for the shrubs that are in the, along the trail because those are native areas. So that's the two deviations.
Thank you. That's all I got. Do a motion if someone would like to make one.
Make that motion. Planning Commission approves the final development plan and final plat as proposed, including the two deviations presented in the staff report and recommend the governing body accept.
Um, I believe that's a mis- except the dead dedication? Does that mean? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that. All right, I'm gonna start over.
Planning Commission approves the final development plan and final plat as proposed, including the two deviations presented in the staff report and recommend the governing body accept the dedication of right-of-way and easements as shown on the final plat. Provided the following conditions are met, items one and two as listed in the staff report.
I'll second that.
By Commissioner Combs and a second by Commissioner Von Ersmann. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
Before we go to the next item, I'll help clarify this for Commissioner Combs too. So just to understand, you are the approval body for the final development plan and for the final plat. But the final plat, what happens is, is the right-of-ways and the easements that are intended for public use, like the road right-of-ways and everything, the dedication of that, which is in the plat, has to be accepted by the governing body. So they're not technically approving the plat. You have done that. But they still have to go ahead and accept those dedications. That's part of their obligation.
Absolutely, and thank you for that. This was, uh, me looking at that thinking it was deviation.
Oh, okay.
Right after deviation.
I wasn't sure, because sometimes it is, sometimes it gets confusing between a final plan and final plat.
That, that was, uh, the Indian, not the Arab.
Okay.
Don't worry, we got another one coming up.
Oh, well, I repeat and restart if I have to.
Plenty of practice. All right. Uh, item number four, Prairie Trace Meadows Fifth Phase, Final Plat and Final Development Plan. Déjà vu.
Yep. I'll, uh, keep it a bit more brief because a lot of it is very similar. The applicant is requesting approval of the final development plan and final plat for the fifth phase of Prairie Trace Meadows. To the east is Prairie Trace Estates Fourth Plat that you just approved and to the north is Prairie Trace Meadows Fourth Plat. This is one of the larger phases of the development and consists of 52 single-family houses on 20.96 acres. This is the final development plan. The building type is for 50-foot wide lot residential neighborhood lots. A trail included to the north along, is included to the north along New Trails Parkway and another trail extends from Prairie Trace Estates Fourth Plat from the east. There are seven open space tracts and they consist of three for the stream corridor. One, the one to the south includes a KCP and L easement. There are two for landscape islands in the cul-de-sacs and a sidewalk easement. The sidewalk easement provides for the continuation of a trail throughout the, the development. Here are the building elevations from an earlier phase and are representative of what will be built here. Um, there are two deviation requests and they're the same as the ones you just heard. Staff is supportive of both. And, uh, staff finds the final development plan and plat are generally in compliance with the revised preliminary development plan and plat. The project is consistent with the various policies in the comprehensive plan and this is also within that one-mile radius of New Century Airport. Staff recommends approval of the final development plan and recommends the governing body accept the dedication of right-of-way and easements as shown on the final plat with the same two conditions. Thank you.
I'll make that motion once. Here we go. Planning Commission approves the final development plan and final plat as proposed, including the two deviations presented in the staff report and recommend the governing body accept the dedication of right-of-way and easements as shown on the final plat. Provided the following conditions are met, items one and two as listed in the staff report.
I'll second that. Perfect motion made by Commissioner Combs. And a second by Commissioner Von Ersmann. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Okay. Moving on, item number five, New Trails North, Third Phase, Final Plat.
Well, we might as well stick in the same neighborhood, uh, except this is the commercial side. Again, this is item five, the New Trails North Third Plat, Final Plat. Property is part of a larger development project that includes, of course, single-family, multifamily housing and, uh, as in this area, uh, the commercial side. Uh, property was, uh, annexed back in 2019, then rezoned to C3 General Commercial in 2020. Again, the, uh, the preliminary plat, the original preliminary plat, as part of this development is outlined in green and, uh, was plowed back in, uh, February of 2022 and has approximately 18 acres. This final plat includes two lots and one track has approx- approximately 6.8 acres. Again, here's a little bit better view of it and its relationship to I-35 and also 175th Street. And again, this is the, again, the final plat that shows lot seven and eight as divided by the, uh, a fairly substantial-sized gas pipeline that runs diagonally through the middle of it. And as you can also see, track C, uh, on the southeast side is a, a detention basin. Uh, staff findings that, uh, this complies with all the requirements of the Land Development Code. The design and layout are substantial compliance with the approved preliminary plat. The application does not deter any existing or future development on adjacent properties for meaning goals and policies of the comprehensive plan and the design does not impede the construction or anticipated future public infrastructure within the area. And staff recommendation. If there's any questions, I'm here, as is the developer's engineer.
I'll move to just commission discussion. Does anybody have any questions for staff or for the applicant?
I, I do unless we're going around Robin's style. I don't want to jump on tips.
Go for it.
Okay. Um, so question, Bobby, you made a comment and I didn't see it clear in the report, staff report. Oh, here it is. So along the frontage of New Trails Circle is the, the five-foot sidewalk construction of New Trails Circle. So even though it's not, it's not on? Thank you. So is the assumption then that New, New Trails Circle is going to circle the whole thing for the sidewalk or? Or is it just an addition to what, what will be seen as this progresses?
Actually, the, actually, uh, this shows a little bit better.
This helps.
Yeah, New Trails Circle is actually already existing.
Okay.
Uh, there's also as part of that, uh, there's, uh, sidewalk ramps that have been constructed in and around the site, so for the ex- extension of these when development occurs on these two lots.
Great, great. That, that helps tremendously. Thank you for clarification on that one. Um, and then also question on the track C and the private, um, drainage basin. Is that normal? Do we typically have like tracks dedicated to private? I mean, I'm reading it as like private. Track C shall be dedicated as a private drainage, drainage easement. Private drainage easement. What's that?
Yeah, atypical. Atypical, most of your retention basins are located in a tract on the subdivision plat. It basically, uh, designates that area in case if we have to go in and do repairs on it. It's set aside. It's not on the lot number eight. Uh, but atypical, all private detention basins or all detention basins are usually located within a tract on, on these subdivision plots.
So if it's, if it's a private detention basin, it's private, why would the city of Gardner have anything to do with it? Typically, wouldn't that be dedicated back to the city of Gardner so they could have access and help out?
Atypical, we do not maintain these retention or detention basins.
Okay.
Those are, uh, the responsibility of, uh, the landowners that are utilizing that, uh, that area for their stormwater management. Uh, if it were to, uh, uh, act as a detention basin for the right-of-way, then we may have, we may have, uh, some responsibility to maintain it. The other thing too is that, uh, if the, if the existing owners fail to maintain that basin, then we can go in there and do something and maybe impose a
Hold them accountable.
Or hold them accountable, sure.
Okay, okay. That, that just helps. It had just been, been a minute and forgive me, I'm Monday tired, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask, so Dan, maybe you know the answer to questions right off. That track, that will serve both of the lots? Is that the intent or is that?
Thank you.
Do you know offhand?
Uh, no.
Okay, so it's just, all right.
So just would serve lot eight?
Correct.
So the reason I asked that question is as Bob explained already, there are times when detention facilities are serving multiple lots and that way, um, the lots that are served don't have to provide their detention on-site. So in this case, if this is only serving the one lot, the other lot would have to do detentions when they develop and that would be part of the site plan review.
Okay, cool. Thank you. I, I think maybe that's what's throwing me off is seeing it in this manner and I think that's why I had the question, so. Okay, thank you for the clarity. I'm good.
Is there any other commissioner discussion or questions? So I will entertain a motion.
I can make that motion. The planning commission approves the final plat as proposed and recommended by the governing and recommends that the governing body accept the dedication of right-of-way and easements as shown on the final plat. Provided the, the following conditions are met, items one through three of the staff report.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Mater and a second by Commissioner Berg. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. All right, that is the end of our regular agenda, staff. Are there any updates or discussion items we need to talk about?
I'm just going to bring up a couple of things. I already noted, um, code changes, those kinds of elements. Just to understand, that is secondary on our priority list. We try to get these case loads out as fast as we can. I just wanted you to be aware, we are looking at parts of the code like that when, when we get a pattern of deviation requests, that's what usually triggers us as staff to start going, okay, does the code need to be changed? And then can the code be changed to something that, that makes sense for folks and that'll work and meet the intent? Um, and I think that's part of this element that you're seeing with these 50-foot lots. Like I said, with the lots have shrunk and sized, more people are encountering these design guidelines. With those design guidelines, now the questions are, okay, is this really a feasible way to approach development? So, um, we're working our way through that. The other thing that I wanted to note tonight for you, and you saw it kind of as we played out a little bit here. One, Catherine, our attorney who's present here, I believe will become our permanent, okay, kind of our permanent attorney representation during the meetings. Spencer took a job with another firm, so he has left. Um, so Catherine will be in his role. Um, so if you see her name on emails and that, you'll know who she is. And, uh, again, if we have conflicts of interest and things like that, that's who we're up going to and relying upon for that kind of information. Um, the other thing you'll note, even though it wasn't real effective, um, because I just talk whenever I want to, it seems like. Um, I had Maggie over in the other role there too. I'd like you to kind of get used to having Maggie there. So when I'm gone or cannot be here and that, Maggie's going to be the go-to person as deputy director. So trying to give her the flavor for that and feeling for that as well. Um, parts of it worked tonight, parts of it were just me jumping in as usual and I've got to kind of watch that, so, um, that's on me. Um, but just to anticipate, we're doing some changes, like some of the things in your packet to try to help you with scripting things and getting those done. Maggie's done an excellent job as she's been going through things. One of the nice things with new employees in that kind of role, she wants to delve in and understand the code and do things. So she's seen things sometimes that we haven't encountered even. And so there's kind of these helps that are coming out of it. Um, that's also influencing in a way, we're doing staff reports and how we do that. So I anticipate there'll be some evolution of some of those products coming to you, uh, in coming months. So, um, there's been some good things. There's some things we have to try out, see how you react to them, see how they work and sometimes go, well, that wasn't the way we wanted it to happen, so let's just not do that that way. So just understand you're going to be a little bit of a guinea pig on some of those things when we do those, so. Uh, our only way to know if it works or doesn't work is to actually test it out, so. Um, with that, I think that's all I have. Maggie, is there anything from your end?
Nothing further. Just.
Next, next meeting's in April. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Uh, just a couple of comments. Uh, uh, I noticed that the minutes on the last meeting was a little bit short. Is that, are we cutting? Uh, I mean, I noticed, I don't know if it's just how it's going to be, because I, I know we had some discussions, but they're not here.
Yeah, so there's, there's several things, yeah, there's several things going on with minutes right now. The, the legal obligation for minutes is very, very short. In fact, what's required by state law is simply the item, the action taken, so on and so forth. So it's very, very small. The other part that's influenced us, we're trying to strike that balance of a kind of a paraphrased summary because one of the things is we don't have time to do verbatim minutes. And because this is recorded on YouTube, we can use the YouTube link for basically verbatim minutes. So we're trying to find that balance, um, with the staff time commitment, two minutes, what it takes and where to go. We kind of got, and I, I think everybody, even the staff, we sat there and looked at this last round and we're going, yeah, that's shortening it quite a bit. Um, so I anticipate we'll probably do some tweaking to the minutes as we move forward. We got to meet those state requirements, obviously. What covers us and helps us is the YouTube link and that because that's, that's, that's the recording. There's no real mistaking what person said. There can be, the hard part is when you paraphrasing that, whoever does the minutes, you don't want them through the paraphrase, maybe not getting the real intent of what was set. And so there's some of that balance that we have to find so that we're not And so there's some of that balance that we have to find so that we're not misrepresenting somebody's response or somebody's question or the way they worded something. Because sometimes we have to basically make it sound better in paper than it may have sounded in meeting. So we have to watch that.
I just made a comment because, you know, I was used to, you know, minutes, oh yeah, Commissioner Mater asked me, you know, that line and I was, and when I opened, I was like, okay, what is? I thought I was missing, you know, maybe a page or so, where's that?
And I do appreciate that.
I don't mind either. It's just that I just made a comment that...
Right, and I do, I do appreciate that. On any of these things, if you have comments like that, make sure we're hearing them. I mean, if you, it only feeds us to try to serve you better, okay? So as we're kind of tweaking things, we may not have come to a resolution and said, oh, this is the way we should do it. Unless it's black and white and it's been dictated to us by code or by state statute. Many of these things, we're trying to, you know, make it so that we're not stuck where staff is spending a huge amount of time and something is already recorded and there's elements of that. And if, if there's something where you have a negative response to it, don't be afraid to email us or call us or state your concern, even like here. We can go back and look at it and try to strike that balance to address those things.
Another thing I just wanna point out that I think I liked the way we did tonight, having the applicants first and then the staff. You know, because before we, you know, staff first and then the applicants, so I thought it was...
You will, you will notice though the difference in some applicants and other applicants, right? Yeah, okay, so that, that's, that's the part that we will have to work on. And I'll, I'll just say it in this case, what you saw, you can tell the EVOG team has been through this process multiple times. Not necessarily here at Gardner, but in communities and things, because they even brought the golden rules with them and everything, right? Some of our applicants, like you saw tonight, not as sophisticated an approach to their presentations. And so one of the things we'll work on with the applicants is getting them used to the idea, you have to represent your project. You're the one that sells it, not staff. Staff's doing an assessment to look at it in light of code, what we anticipate from previous decisions by the governing body as well as the planning commission recommendations. So we can't, we're not here to sell their project for them. They have to do that a little bit. And that's a little bit of a change for a number of these applicants here at Gardner.
I just had this comment. Appreciate the help.
We'll try.
Yeah, thank you.
Maggie does a good job. I get in the way.
Alright, so if we don't have anything else, I'll make a motion or I'll entertain a motion to close the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Alright, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Thank you everyone.